Good.
I didn't just want to watch your eyes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just wanted to be in the all present.
Wait until I say it. They were in the gas water.
That's a, that's a point.
So.
I'm watching.
The original resolution of denial dated 2/26/2019. Good evening.
Kevin, did you do the MJP, sir?
I did.
I couldn't. My wife had a high-throwing car and was near a stick.
Oh.
You know, for a long weekend. So, I felt bad saying I couldn't do it.
Yeah, no, I did about a month ago, so.
Peter Block, any questions?
Yes.
Actually, here, if you can, I think combined with the last one, it's worth mentioning, we will cancel here preferred.
It's a lot.
Just one class and I think it stands still.
This is our first look to the flyer. I pledge allegiance to the flyer from the United States of America. Consider it a reinitiation for which it stands, on the nation on the ground, in this world, where there is justice for all. For our secret clients, we call the public meeting act as provided daytime location. This meeting to include two designated newspapers, published sustainably at very hard press, the official newspaper. File notice with the borough players and post a notice on board and board and borough offices and on the borough player's side as well. Good evening, everybody. Welcome. Mayor of all.
Mr. Cashmore.
Here.
Mr. Goddard.
Here.
Mr. Twill, here. Mr. Sayo. Mr. Lustig.
Here.
Mr. Aaron Long.
Here.
Mr. Knox. Mr. Smith.
Yes, here.
Mr. Bills, here. Asra, here.
I'll send the minutes from eight times. Any discussion? Eight times, that's a high bar. I mean, these last spots over, he was chair. Is there someone down there at the door?
It should, it should be open on that. I forgot that I said it. Maybe it's open on that.
Okay, because there was, then a shot again. But should we find out?
It should be fine.
Okay, good. All right, thanks. Mark, I'm in the afternoon. You want to show you down? You have that locked again. Okay, is I in?
Yes.
Maybe you should.
Are you looking at any? Yeah, thank you. But I'm gonna say that.
It's not open.
Yeah.
It's not open.
It's an open public meeting. The door's. It is an open public meeting. We're trying to.
It may not be open.
No, not to. Uh, the application MMJP. All right. Uh, discussion or motion on minutes from, uh, Taylor.
Okay.
Go.
Mr. Cashmore. Do you ever come in?
Yes.
Mr. Twill, yes. How's the next year?
Yes.
Once again, moving on. The MMJP Properties LLC number two, Twenty-Six Beach Street, block ten, lot twenty-one.
It's a technical measure because it, under our ordinance, it becomes a measure because of these variances.
Okay. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, gentlemen and ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Kevin Kennedy and I'm here tonight on behalf of MMJP Properties, seeking a subdivision. Uh, thank you for coming out on this, uh, very frigid evening. Uh, Mr. Chairman and ladies and gentlemen, uh, many of you will recall that we were previously, uh, before you, I think it was in, uh, January of two thousand nineteen, seeking, uh, subdivision approval with a number of variances. That application was ultimately denied. Uh, I was here, uh, and as I recall, uh, there were a number of questions and comments and concerns. And at least my notes suggested that some of the more prevalent concerns were, uh, a lack of sufficient, uh, professional planning testimony presented. And there were a number of questions, uh, regarding, uh, the whole variances associated with the proposed homes. Um, certainly there were other, uh, questions and comments and concerns and objections, but those at least were from my, from my notes and my recollection, some of the more prevalent concerns. Uh, my client has heard, uh, my client's representative has heard, uh, those, uh, questions and comments and concerns and has submitted a new application for which we are here tonight. And we are seeking subdivision, again, as the same sized properties. But the application has been substantially modified so as to eliminate all of the variances associated with the proposed homes. So, the two, uh, receiving a subdivision tonight, uh, to create, uh, sorry, to subdivide existing lot twenty-one into, uh, two lots, twenty-one point oh one and twenty-one point oh two. Each, uh, will be used for single-family purposes, as is permitted, uh, in the zone. And, uh, the lot area will be one thousand six hundred eighty-eight square feet for each lot. And that is what triggers the variance. Uh, eighteen hundred square feet is required in the zone and we are proposing one thousand six hundred eighty-eight square feet for each lot. Um, we hope that the provisions, uh, will be sufficient, uh, to address your concerns. I have two witnesses tonight. Uh, I anticipate I have two witnesses. Craig Grant, who is the, uh, member of the, uh, MMJP Properties. And we also have, uh, Mr. Jim Hagan, James Higgins' planner. So, Mr. Chairman, uh, and, uh, if you consent, I'll call my first office.
Um, just before we start, we actually, um, yeah, we did appear August twenty-seventh, two thousand and eighteen. At that time, we, uh, accepted jurisdiction, reviewed the, uh, notices, et cetera. Uh, I marked as A1 jurisdictional packet, A2 minor subdivision plan to carry by Charles Solomon, dated five five nineteen. Yeah, nineteen. Um, I marked as P1, um, the report from the Board of Engineers dated Hoda, dated in succeed. And, uh, tonight I just marked, um, as P2, the resolution of denial, uh, the initial application that Mr. Kennedy just described. Uh, that resolution dated two twenty-six nineteen. And again, um, this matter had been carried several times. Uh, each time it was announced with no, that it would be carried and no further notice being required.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, that hasn't been said, but I'd like to call Craig Grant.
Anyone raise your hand? You solemnly swear test, estimate, and advise, it is true, full truth, and unobtuvature?
I do.
And you just state your name and ask the question.
Craig Grant, G R A N two.
All right, good evening, uh, Mr. Grant. And, uh, just for the record, let's, let's do some of the, uh, get some of the procedural information out of the way. Uh, we're talking about Twenty-Six Beach Street, uh, lot ten, lot twenty-one. And for the record, uh, who or which entity is the owner of that property?
MMJP Properties LLC is, is the leader owner, which I am eighty percent member of, two children are the ten percent.
And, uh, MMJP is limited liability company of the, I'm sorry, of the state of New Jersey, correct?
Yes.
And you, as eighty percent member, authorized to speak on behalf of the LLC?
Yes.
Uh, for the record, how long has MMJP owned the property, roughly?
Twenty-five months.
And, uh, so about since October, September, two thousand seventeen?
Yes.
Uh, my notes reflect that the property is in the R3 zone. Is that correct, or no?
Yes.
And currently, uh, my records reflect, and we'll have, uh, Mr. Higgins confirm this, but right now the lot is three thousand three hundred seventy-six square feet, give or take?
Yes.
Okay. And for the record, um, uh, with regard to the, um, eighteen hundred square foot, it, uh, is required in the lot, so it's an oversized lot. What currently exists on the subject lot today as, as we are here tonight?
One very old, single-family, in this house.
Okay. And it, uh, and it's been historically occupied?
Yes.
Um, do you, as a representative of the owning entity, have any observations about, uh, well, before you do this, why don't you talk about the condition of the existing home? Or what does it look like? Or what are the conditions?
Well, it's, you get to see, uh, for, in that it's habitable, but it is ninety-five years old and the foundation is crumbling and it's not raised. So it's ex around, uh, well, so it's seen a lot, see through the years. So the foundation is crumbling, the windows are, uh, almost non-functional, um, and it's, it's crumbling. I, I wasn't able to get a seat out of this one until I made some structural repairs, updated it and got a seat out. So it's, it's in the state of, uh.
And, and how old would you say it roughly?
I, I think it was built in nineteen twenty-six, so ninety-four years old.
And, um, just for the record, uh, you referenced this earlier, but is, is the existing house, uh, structure FEMA compliant?
No, it's not raised.
So it's not elevated?
No.
And the flood vents?
No.
Uh, what about, can you tell the board, uh, about some observations about the location and orientation of the existing structure on the lot?
Well, it sits to the extreme, uh, east side, in that it's inches away from the neighbor's property. Why is there, I don't know, but it is, as I said, extremely placed on the east side of the property line. Um, such that my leaves are over the neighbor's leaves. Um, and there's, again, inches between it and the back fence, that property line as well.
So clearly, the existing home is not constructed in the middle of the lot?
No.
And I think, just for the record, my, uh, review of, of the plans indicated that, uh, I believe the existing structure is a mere zero point nine feet off of the side yard?
Yes.
And I think it's about zero point three feet off of the rear yard.
Not three feet, zero point three.
Zero, zero, I'm sorry, zero point three.
Foot.
Uh, so, very small distance. Now, your, uh, proposal tonight is to demolish the existing structure and, and subdivide, correct?
Yes.
And each lot, uh, if this application's approved, will ultimately, uh, host a single-family home?
Yes.
Okay. Now, for the record, because I, I made some, uh, statements in the, in my opening and, uh, I think you need to confirm that, uh, since you're a faculty. I indicated that the, if this subdivision's approved, the homes that you will construct or have constructed will comply with all, uh, bulk variances, obviously not the lot area, but, but.
But no installation, that's correct. I'm asking for variances on lot size, but nothing with regard to the, the future homes there that could totally comply.
So they're gonna comply with height?
Height, with.
Rear yard, set yard, side yard, coverage? Um, okay, Mr. Chairman, I have another question for the witness at this time.
Would that be a condition of approval that, um, if he cannot build a conforming house, that the subdivision is voided?
Well, and would be.
Forming less than hundred square foot? Right.
The homes should conform.
Well, they, they can't afford.
They can't.
Well, they cannot afford the one that I was answering for tonight. Uh, other than that, would they conform no variances whatsoever?
No. Other than the lot variance for each lot, we are not seeking and will not seek any dimensional variances for the structures to be.
So the subdivision would be voided if you need to come back from the variance?
I don't know if it, or if it would, I don't know if it's voided, but clearly no building permits, zone permits, but issue absolutely would be.
You could be restricted.
You'd have to be restricted, yeah.
You, you have an hour line and you've walked late in here. You have had shows of the physical size of the house, set backs and stuff.
Yes.
And that's all along?
Yes, and, and, uh, Mr. Grant, I think that you make a, a board members ask a very important question. We've spoken about this and you've spoken with your architect, spoken with your planner, spoken with, uh, Mr. Mr. Sermon about this. I mean, everyone knows that the bulk dimensional variances appear to have been a big deal for, for some of the board members.
Of, of the homes?
On the homes.
Correct, yes.
And you recognize that, yeah, this application is approved, you can only build these homes if they are compliant with the, uh, dimensional requirements.
I understand that, yes.
Okay.
Well, my next question, can you not build a conforming house on this property as it is currently?
Yes, I can read that.
So, so why do you need the variance, really? Because you can build a conforming house there. I mean, what is the reasons for the variance, really?
Well, we have a planner to address some of those questions, if, if you have all that question.
Okay.
I suppose, but I think it's actually, he needs to answer that.
I think we should answer it.
Yeah, so the question is, it might not have been, is that, why not build a one conforming house on one lot, on the lot, rather than subdivide it?
I actually think two homes would be more consistent with what is currently there. The fifty-foot frontage divided at point five gives me almost identical property, two property sizes identical to, which is already there on that side of the street, in that neighborhood. I'm sorry? In that neighborhood. On that, on that side of the street, in that neighborhood, it's consistent with every other lot size already there. The building two homes is actually more consistent with the neighborhood conformity than.
Yeah, but that's not an answer. They, they, because the question, at the previous hearing, that is memorializing the resolution, you acknowledged it was for financial reasons.
No, I said.
No, it's, you did say that, because you answered my question.
That was not my single purpose. I'd like to build a home to eventually retire here. This is where I grew up. I'd like to build one and I wanted to have, have one for my kids.
All right, and I'd like to, uh, put it for the record, it isn't a record, it isn't a resolution, that you did acknowledge at the last meeting, that you were doing this for financial reasons. As a memorializing the resolution, which was never appealed.
That is not our testimony tonight.
Okay, so this, this reason, you're after.
It's a single purpose, I think, from the sentences before and after that.
So, nothing else, that was a consideration of yours, but it wasn't, you're saying, it wasn't your sole consideration?
No, not at all.
So your, so your considerations are financial and you want to retire and then want to give your kids?
Yes.
Those are your reasons?
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Grant? Anyone else can ask a question, of the witnesses, that's all. If not, all the questions closed. Here are another witnesses, sir.
I do, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I'd like to call my third.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Please.
Mr. Higgins, I'm sorry. You solemnly swear test, estimate, and advise, it is true, full truth, and unobtuvature?
I do.
You could just state your name for the record.
James W. Higgins, H R G I S.
And once again, for the record, we are not.
You're a.
So we know.
You're a planner. Not that we are, yes. You're a planner, Mr. Higgins. Yes, I'm a licensed, I'm a licensed professional planner. I've stayed up and licensed for about forty years. And I've been recognized for this for a number of.
And if any number of occasions, without objection from any of the board members, we will continue to accept any requests.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Higgins, just for the record, you're familiar with the property in question, correct?
That's correct. I've been to the property in question on a number of occasions. I reviewed the application, uh, looked at zoning ordinance and looked at the area, including which side is located, and also looked at the taskbooks.
Okay, and you were here for the record, uh, for the testimony of Mr. Grant, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, instead of, uh, me asking a lot of questions, could you, uh, do you have any observations, as a professional planner, about this subdivision? And the nature of this subdivision and how it will interact and impact and other affect and fit in with the community?
Yes, I do. The application is to take a three thousand three hundred seventy-six square foot lot, remove the existing non-conforming dwelling that exists on that lot and create two, two lots of one thousand six hundred eighty-eight square feet. And build conforming dwellings on those, each of those two lots. Uh, that will conform to your zoning, also conform to FEMA standards as far as work elevated, the linear area on the houses and, uh, looking forward to all other bulk requirements of your ordinance. Uh, the site is three thousand three hundred seventy-six square feet. It does have the existing non-conforming single-family residences on it. Uh, that residence violates the side yard setback, front yard setback, and rear yard setback on the site. The surrounding land uses in the site are predominantly single-family residences, most of which are undeveloped lots and across from the same size that the applicant is proposing. Uh, and residences on many of those lots, while you go out and actually measure the distances to the front and the side rear yard setbacks very clearly by looking at the area. Many of those residences are non-conforming with regard to some particular side yard setbacks. The subdivision requires bulk variances for each of the lots, bulk variance for each of the lots for lot area. The ordinance requires one thousand eight hundred square feet. And the resulting lots in this subdivision will be one thousand six hundred eighty-eight square feet. So it's a hundred and twelve square, square feet short in, uh, on each lot. And the reason for that is that the, well, the lots conform with regard to width and they also conform with regard to depth, but they don't have the necessary depth that would bring them up that additional hundred and twelve feet. That would be a matter of, lot number four and a half, five feet, that would be required in depth in order to, if you require a lot area. Um, I think there's substantial positive reasons for bringing the variance. Uh, for one thing, I think that there's an element of C-one partials involved with the application because of the fact that the lots do not have the necessary depth, despite the fact that they have the necessary lot width. They don't have the necessary depth to allow for the one thousand eight hundred square foot minimum lot size that the ordinance requires. Uh, but more importantly, I think there's C-two, a number of reasons that it qualifies with C-two variance where the purposes of municipal land use law are advanced by the grant of the variances. And, and the reasons for that are, first of all, uh, to encourage the purposes of municipal land use law, one of them is to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state in a manner which will promote the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare. And another purpose is to secure safety from fire, flood, panic, and other natural and mad day disasters. And in this instance, I think this application does advance both of those purposes of municipal land use law. The existing residence has, the floor area on the first, on the lower level, is not raised. Uh, and, uh, there's no requirement that would require existing residents to be raised to the, to the FEMA, to the level of FEMA required. So that by allowing this subdivision, giving the incentive for this applicant to build two houses, there is now one, two houses that are elevated and are fully compliant to FEMA requirements, I think substantially advances to promotes the public health and safety. And also secures safety from flood and panic and other natural disasters, particularly flooding. So I think that's a very compelling reason. Uh, in addition, the proposed development removes the existing residents on the site and proposes, okay, proposes the, the linear areas again, that are raised so that there's, there's no, uh, to eliminate existing safety assets. So I think that's, are two purposes of land use law that are significantly advanced by this application. Uh, another purpose of the municipal land use law is provide for ample length, air, and open space. And the existing building on the site violates neither the side, rear, and front yard setbacks. The proposed buildings on the site will meet all the requirements of your ordinance in terms of setbacks, in terms of lot coverage. So it would be a much better situation in terms of light, air, open space than what currently exists. Furthermore, with this lot, you could construct a fully conforming house on this lot. Mr. Higgins asked that question earlier, did you have? That house would be forty-four feet wide. It's a fifty-foot wide lot with three foot setback on either side, so it would be forty-four feet wide. And in order to comply with lot coverage requirement, it could be forty-seven point five feet deep. That would give you, on the entire, as you're standing on the street, looking at the lot, you would have total six feet of open space on that fifty-foot wide lot that you're looking at. Three feet on your side. This application is proposing two dwellings with three point three feet on the east side of the parcel, three point three feet on the west side of the parcel, and six point three feet in the middle of the parcel. So you would have a total of thirteen point two feet of open space when you're standing on the street, looking at this parcel as opposed to one very large, completely uncharacteristic house that does not comply, does not consistent with any of the other houses in this immediate neighborhood. So in terms of light, air, open space, I think there's a significant benefit in terms of being improved over the existing situation and, and something better than what could be constructed as a right on the site, on this lot, that exists now. Uh, another purpose, I think, has advanced by the municipal land use law is to promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations. And in this instance, the zoning ordinance establishes of appropriate population density, you are pre-summing this, twenty-four point two units per acre. The existing density on this site is twelve point nine units per acre, which is about half of what the ordinance anticipates. The proposed density that the applicant is proposing, and while this is not a density variance, it is a viable subdivision, a business for comparison, is much closer to the density that the ordinance that recommends for the dwellings will be twenty-five point eight units per acre as opposed to twenty-four point two. So it will bring the site more to be forming with the anticipated density of the ordinance. Uh, more important, it brings it more to be forming with the existing density of most of the dwellings and lots in this zone. Most of the dwellings and lots in this zone are the size that the applicant is proposing, or within a couple of feet of the size, couple of square feet of the size that the applicant is proposing. So the density that's being proposed is consistent with the character of the area. One of the purposes of the municipal land use law is that requires knowing to give reasonable consideration to the character of the area. Clearly, this subdivision will give reasonable consideration to the character of the area because the lots that are being created are the exact same size of most of the other lots on the same side of the beach and within a couple of square feet of most of the lots on the opposite side of the beach. So it's clearly consistent with the intent of the municipal land use law as far as, uh, creating zoning that's consistent, gives reasonable consideration to the character of the area. And finally, another purpose of the municipal land use law is to encourage coordination of various public and private procedures and activities, shaping land development with a view of lessening costs for such development and to the more efficient use of land. And clearly taking a lot that has a density that's approximately half of what is, is provided for in ordinance in this zone and providing for two lots that could create a density that is much not going to consist, more consistent with the density permitted in this zone, but is absolutely consistent with the density of most of the other lots in this zone, uh, is a more efficient use of the land as compared to their net. So when I look at those, all of this, I, I think that there are substantial positive reasons for bringing the variance. I don't see any substantial negative impact. The proposed lots are consistent with the character of the area. They, it will have the same appearance of the other houses in this medium area, with the exception that they will have conforming and slightly better conforming side lot, side yards. There will be fully conforming front yards, fully conforming rear yards, lights conforming, the lot coverage is conforming. So that there's no substantial negative impact, in my opinion. And the fact that this proposed level is more consistent with the surrounding area than what could be constructed on this lot, which would be, again, a forty-foot wide house, it's thirty-seven feet deep. And is on a fifty-foot lot, one of the fastest majority of lots in this zone. So when I look at that, I think, if there are C-one considerations as far as hardship, I think there are compelling C-two considerations in terms of benefits, in terms of promoting the purposes of the land use law. And I don't see any substantial negative impact.
You want, uh, Mr. Higgins, uh, just officially mark this in the paper, this patent? Uh, carry, I believe, word eight.
Three.
Eight three.
And, and what is it?
It's a copy of the tax map. And I'm just gonna have a bunch of copies here and, uh, our lot highlighted by my office. Let me just move mine. Let me just move mine. Okay. All right. Here. We got one copy of this. So as that document is making its way around, can you sort of just, I guess, reiterate if you believe that the subdivision will fit in or will this fit in or is it going to be out of scale, dramatically out of scale?
No, I think it would be perfectly in scale with what is existing in this area. Look at the same side of the street, you've got 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 13 of the 15 lots that are on the south side of Beach Street are the same size as were being proposed by the applicant. One of the two lots is not as the applicant's parcel, the subject of the application, and then the other that's not is a slightly larger lot that is actually on a bulkhead front and rear area. So, and then if you look at the other side, you have, and these five of the lots are similar to or smaller than the lot lots the applicant is proposing on Beach Street. So it's completely consistent with the character of this area and with ways developed over the years.
And I know you had testified about the positive features of, of being FEMA compliant and clearly if the application is approved, we would comply with all the conditions, we would comply with all remaining FEMA regulations.
Yes.
And in your...
We would have to.
Yes. Even if we didn't want to, we would. And, and in your opinion, as a professional planner, is there a legitimate state of municipal interest in approving applications where homes are better able to protect against what appears to be more frequent title searches?
Well, very definitely. Clearly, the FEMA regulations are in response to superstore sand being potential for other events happening in the future. And again, as I said, the subdivision is structured with two new fully conforming houses to advance the purposes of municipal land use law with regard to promoting the general welfare and promoting the public safety.
And the councilman asked a very relevant, very important question, and it's a fair question, about why not just build one single family home? I know you addressed that, but is it your testimony that actually the one conforming single family home could have more impact, adverse impact on the neighborhood and be actually more inconsistent with the neighborhood?
It would be more consistent with the neighborhood. It would not, would again, would have only total six feet of, of open space in terms of side yard setbacks, whereas we have the two houses I proposed there who have had more than double that, about 13.2 feet.
And basic impacts.
So I think substantially in terms of studies, in terms of light, air, open space was being proposed here is a far superior planning alternative.
And what about in terms of, we talked about, well, in your opinion, to wrap this up, if this application is approved and we got, and we received the two lot variances, lot variance, I'm sorry, lot side variances, and built conforming homes, were those two conforming single family homes that we're looking to build, would they overpower or overwhelm the lot in the neighborhood?
No, it would fit right in very nicely with the, with the system.
And last question. If this application is approved, subject to the testimony provided and the conditions that we propose, do you have an opinion as to whether or not this application represents a better zoning alternative?
It's a far superior zoning alternative, in my opinion, both to what exists now on the site and to what could be constructed on the site as a right. You've got to understand that your ordinance permits, allows the minimum three yard, a maximum minimum three yard side yard, three foot side yard setback. And that's really geared towards 25-foot lots. You have a 50-foot lot here that which a 44-foot wide house with a three-foot side yard setback on either side is much more visually imposing than a 19-foot wide house on a 25-foot wide lot.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions for the witness at this time.
I have a question here because if you, and I found good answers of dating or somebody else to do this, so to build a conforming home, being inside yard setbacks and just like, then you have to build 18.4 foot wide one, I think, given setbacks?
Those three feet, three feet minus.
So total 6.6, I think is the combined size. Or is it a notice?
It's just a ordinance, it's free, so that can go to, if they can go three, that's a little unfortunate, I want to make.
Okay, so 19 foot, right, 19 foot. And then, so you need a 40-foot long house, right? 19 by 40 in order to meet the area setbacks, is 15 feet in front yards, five, then to 60 foot wide?
67 foot wide.
So whatever that is, but how, are you going to need 50% building coverage if you build that?
Yeah.
How do you then need the 50, you'd be over 50% building coverage if you build to your setbacks, wouldn't you? The three feet, the three feet, and then?
That's why I must propose here something different than that, this house.
No, there's nothing proposed for that. You were saying that, that, you know, what he could build that's right, that's right, you know, would mean that, I don't know that that's right because you still have a 50-foot lot building coverage, that's, I mean, 50%, not getting that 50%.
50% building coverage of 1688 is 804.
Right. And is that?
So if you, if you take the, the length and width, well, okay, the length and width is, width is 19, I didn't remember, right, 19. And what's the depth? The depth is 15.5, that's 20 minus 57, so it's a bit of a sample. So 47, 37.
I believe I calculated that based on you building coverage, I have my calculations here, so.
No, that's fine, I just wanted to make sure.
I'll just pick out my, make sure.
Well, I did mine, but obviously I did it wrong, so.
I did.
I don't know what was, not missing.
I mean, it's, it's somewhere around 720 square feet.
Okay. So a maximum size house would be about 720.
Right, right, it's less, but it's not usually less.
Right, so a little bit less than 720 square feet.
Yeah.
Per home.
Right.
And that, those lots would be then de-restricted, and I just, I just wanted to add to that, the applicant stipulated even de-restrict the lots to be a conforming home. I just want everybody to know what those conforming homes would be, if that's all. And that's fine, you know, we're good, because we're made sure to meet what it was. So I won't do that.
And one other thing, the only, the only comment that the streamers provided, positive, well, good testimony for his applicant, but he did say, he did say 3.3.
Yeah, it's three feet.
So the light, air, open space, release 12.
I was looking at an older plan and that's 3.3, by the way.
What's the minimum square footage per, with all living to basically?
800 square feet.
I think it is, that's, that's why I was, I think there is.
Well, it might be that the applicant has to extra that variance.
See, that's it, because I think that's where I was going with my very bad man is that I think the maximum size house that you could build to meet the setbacks is 720, but I think our minimum that is permitted is 800.
Do you have the 800 on the first floor? Or 812?
812.
812.
I think we get that.
Yeah, I accept that, I accept that.
Yeah, his odds are better than mine, I don't know, because I, I was looking at the tax map and I barely read.
Carrie, we're talking about the conforming house on the lot, it's existing today.
No.
This is my, yeah, it sounds like very much suggested.
Yeah, because they're, they're stipulating that they would build conforming homes. I was sort of making sure that that's a mathematical, that's a mathematical possibility.
Possibility.
Yeah. Any other questions?
One, you have the, it's hard to read on my long plan, but I think the existing home is 49 feet off the property line and in the back it's, let me see the exact mention, but it's not more than two feet off of the back. So the existing house is, is 49 conforming. Do you have the total square foot of the lot you're applying to?
The total square foot of the existing structure?
On the existing structure.
No, I don't. Let me see if it's here on the engineering plan that I have. No, it's not.
The existing square foot.
They have a copy of the, this is the book that I've been looking for.
I, I believe, I'm just trying to get the bar, I don't know how much.
Our architect is here, it's a catchphrase, he's going to be looking for that answer.
All right, I can help, because you have your two to the single family homes, which we determined would be about 700 square foot per, per, per building, I mean, plot. And I'm just wondering how that compares to the existing structure. And then what I've done, if you, if you didn't bring the subdivision and the owner decided to build one full-size home, where I've been, where you showed your setback lines, 15-foot setback, three foot on each side, basically if you draw, if you draw a line across the front of those and fill in the center or six-foot area, that would be the potential structure that would be built on the property, potential conforming structure.
That's right, conforming structure, I do want to correct my direct testimony, the fully conforming structure taking into account lot coverage would be 44 feet wide and a below 38 feet deep, about 47 feet.
That would be 38, so that, that would be substantially larger structure than we ran with the subdivision and allowing two smaller homes, one minus lot.
That's true.
So that's where you're saying you have greater open air, less lot coverage, more open space.
You have a little bit less lot coverage because they have, not only you have the same.
About the same.
About the same.
Now, if you're, if you're, that wall, there was this area, on the wall in the middle would be all covered by structure there and houses over there. Correct.
Right, but you want to put it to, so the percentage is?
Oh, no, I'm not saying, I don't know, I think what, what some people are opposed to is the size of the structure and, and how much of the ground is covered. So if you don't create the subdivision, you're covering more ground, less open space, and you're actually testifying to the concerns and not believing, or leaving it. So, and then, and you get the other, I'm just curious, the house would be conforming with this square.
That's the flip for fresh.
And then what?
Two new square foot of lot coverage, two new proposed structures compared to the lot coverage. That's it. I don't think you said you have it.
The architect goes, I imagine it's much, I mean, less, lesser lot coverage because one home, one, every day.
Do you want me to have the architect's rights so we can ask the question?
Would be the third alternative is that the existing home, if the applicant were to reveal, and she's very well, self property, I didn't, someone's to renovate, that existing home, you might not accomplish anything.
Right.
You know, or, or the applicant could renovate the existing home and the nine tent would put all of the one side yard and only a few people off the rear side yard.
It's, it's a whole, a few rest of the year.
Yeah, and that would be, you know, I mean, that is a third alternative.
The existing home is clearly not conforming.
Right, so.
And hands over onto the, to the existing property.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask you this question on the first square footage? It says minimum GFA total square feet in the archery zone is 800 feet. So it's higher than you thought, but I'd read that as being anywhere fours, total GFA.
Okay.
Minimum GFA, total, it says total, so it's not even more than four.
If you go two floors.
So two floors.
Yeah, so they need to, that's if you need to, so that's not max.
Do you want to have Mr. Reagan, some more answers, Mr. Catchmore's question?
On the square foot versus?
Yes, versus the two new sub side and lots with the, Jerry, what is the lot coverage going to be in an hour?
Can you just, next to Mr. Reagan there? And you raise your right hand. So I'm just going to test whether you're about to take the true footage and knock off the truth.
I do.
And state your name and spell your identity.
Joe Argent, G A N, R E G A N, West Coast, Detective State of Jersey. And you have testified before this board many times, and without any objection from the board members?
All right, Mr. Chairman, Reagan, you're familiar with the site and the application, correct?
Yes.
And I think you actually, I think you did, you called, you testified at the early version. Anyway, could you ask, answer the question about the square footage?
This is definitely.
Is that already marked, is that?
That was the plan from round one, so it's not, the application's denied.
Right, so I should mark that.
Okay, I'll go ahead and send that, I want to look at that.
Would you have the whole chart, if I appear?
What is the whole document?
It's a, it'd be reservation plans for the previous application.
I want you to bring your stuff, so I can just get the link, go to all. Just give me A4. Okay, and these are architectural plan, okay, architectural plans, three sheets by Jeremiah Reagan dated 4518 and revised to 1819. The less is, wow, they're like opposite, 1819 and 918, that's right, yeah. Well, all right, 918 and the less is 1819. Okay. Very good.
And Mr. Reagan, just for the record, the plans that were just marked in A4, those were plans that were submitted in conjunction with the first application, which was denied.
Yes, they were.
And that they are not submitted tonight for purposes of showing what's proposed.
No.
Because we are not.
You're just using it to determine your square footage.
Oh, the existing structure. Yes.
And how did we do it? Do we, how did you do it that, did you figure it out yet?
Just by having on the chart the building coverage of the existing structure.
There you go. Does that include the taxes or what?
Well, I'll get that, the total building coverage would be 1446, and that also includes a front porch. So the actual square footage of the first floor of the house would be slightly less than probably about 12.
Be what?
A little bit over 12.
Sir, I'm looking at, yeah, the cover portion, I'm going to go wood deck and back.
There's no wood deck in that.
Your building coverage.
I have a chance, it's a wood deck.
So your building coverage of the existing is 14%?
Yes.
Okay, 14.46.
Well, 1446 square feet, would be 42.83%.
42.83%.
Yes, that's existing.
Existing.
Yes.
What did you have as square footage?
I didn't calculate the square footage of the house, it was.
Well, the max, well, the max footprint could be 720.
720.
That's a footprint, right.
So that's 1440 square foot of lot coverage.
Right.
You lock.
Okay.
You do lock.
Till the bottom.
Right, so the lot coverage of the existing structure is 1446, 1,146 square feet, and the permissible building space on the subway line lot is 1,440 square feet. And, no, 720, and under lock, for a total of 1,440 square feet. So it's identical to, near identical to existing structure, one of the two structures. So it's identical to, near identical to existing structure, one of the two structures you've built as far as footprint on the ground level. Now, if you built the fully conforming structure, how many square foot do you have lot coverage? Did you say that also?
Before you performed, structure?
If you filled in that middle with a single lot and fully conforming structure, you built on a single lot.
It would be...
You would have eight six foot. If you filled in that single area, it would be... I'm, I'm not at that.
You're approximately a little less than one thousand seven hundred square feet.
About seventeen hundred square feet.
A little less, no.
I, I'm looking at unintended consequences. If the board, if we want to approve this subdivision, you would have a single structure allowing less length, air and space, uh, seventeen hundred, so a foot, a footprint seventeen hundred square foot. If we approved this application, then you have two separate houses that will cover one thousand four hundred and forty square foot. If you left, if you remodeled the existing structure, you would have a whole lot coverage of one thousand four hundred and forty-six square foot, but none of the setbacks would be conforming. And those are basically your three scenarios. So we just have to be careful if you're applying this application of unintended consequences, which would either be the old home before you, side or setback, when you renovate it, clean it up, used, or having a much larger structure that is covering more, longer than the two separate houses if we grant the subdivision. That's what I'm trying to figure out.
Can I ask you, you're correct, Steve?
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to...
Can I clarify, because the wood deck, because the block plan shows that there's a one-story in the back and then there's a wood deck. That, that's how the plan, it doesn't exist, it doesn't exist.
I'm sorry, I think, uh, maybe that's for, um, Mr. Reagan, there was a question about the block plan shows...
Current?
Yeah, it's showing currently that there is a, there's a wood deck in the back.
There's a wood deck, uh, the, the back building is one-story, but the front of the house is two stories. The wooden deck is on top of the first floor.
So it's elevated wood deck?
It's on the ground. It's on the ground, it's on the, it's on top of, it's on top of the...
Okay. But there are stairs that are coming down.
There are stairs.
And that's what's shown.
That's what's shown.
Oh, so the stairs go down. Is there also some patio below that? Is there another line on the plan?
Yes, there's some wood, uh, a wooden deck.
So there is a wooden deck on the grade. Or there's a wooden platform on grade. It's not a deck.
Correct.
It's not above two feet. I just care, it's only, you know, I just, I just want to... There's, yeah, there's those lines around the plan. Yeah, they're there, that's what I'm talking about.
It does increase the square footage of lot coverage.
Well, the question is, for the architect, did you include that, that deck and stairs in your calculation? You did.
Yes, just for the...
Well, yes.
Not the deck, that's not...
Most likely.
Well, the other question is, yes.
Stairs around.
Well, wait, did you include the stairs in your calculation?
Yes.
Did you include the non-intended gap in your calculation?
I'll go back and double check my notes.
This is pretty big, it's twice the size of the stairs, maybe three times.
I, other things I did, probably just the two-story building and the one-story building in the back was essentially about, or elevated there.
Well, that calculating, that does make, makes sense because the, the proposed lot is sixteen eighty-eight, it's probably about fourteen hundred. So, you know, that rear, uh, that side door that's there probably counts for that. Couple hundred square feet. Couple hundred square feet in that lot. Again, I didn't ask, I just wanted to make sure the plan's accurate, that was the only
Do you have a company name structure?
Correct. That was true.
Assume we want to, but you would not have an answer.
I have no further questions. Mr. Chairman, we're members of the board of questions over the next...
Mr. Reagan, can you remind me about what you said about the flood, um, impact or what the same, when there are two versus one dwelling, I think you talked about. I think architect, it was impermeable, I think architect, again.
I don't think I ever compared two buildings to one, he's working well in terms of flooding.
I say...
I was comparing visual with that. And white air, open space.
To, but there was one comment, that's, there was benefit on the flood.
I don't know what currently exists.
There is definitely.
If you have the existing dwelling, which can stay, and plus, there's going to flood that eliminates it, but otherwise it can stay the way it is, it can be improved in terms of structurally improved, but it could continue to have the living space on ground level rather than having it elevated. What I'm saying is that by allowing the subdivision and giving the applicant incentive to build two new houses that are elevated and are much safer than the existing residence that has the living space on, on the floor, is, is a consideration in terms of public health and safety.
As well as conforming.
As well as conforming, yes.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Neil Young Thomas, I have a usual letter, uh, total sixteen. Uh, some of the normal things, right? Uh, if the applicant is successful, then it will probably, they can repair the sidewalk, that's gonna have to be replaced, it'll have to be bonded with performance funds, uh, there'll have to be hot lines, uh, there'll have to get either tap or approval or letter of no interest, uh, and, uh...
Orbital housing, right?
This is any orbital housing, that's a change, right? And then it was ordered to be done within the next month.
So you, uh, you agree to the, uh, the end of our second portion, then, I'll change your stuff?
We do.
Are we open to the public, there's no other questions from the board? Anyone in the public have a question about the testimony or a statement this evening? If not, the public portion is now closed. We're in a discussion, we're in motion.
I had a question for Mr. Kennedy. Um, as, as, what are, what is considered, is it financial hardship, consider hardship that we can make? Not financial, okay. Where...
I'm sorry.
Then I'll, I'll just ask, end it that question.
Okay.
Right, I'm sure in his closing, they'll set forth, but, you know, exceptional topography, I think Mr. Reagan saw, or somebody, one of the witnesses talked about the fact that overall square footage is certainly adequate, but because of the size and shape of the property, they can't meet all of the requirements.
But the continuity of design and continuation of plot size is part of the significant part of our, of course, presentation, that's that, that's, yes, uh, which I would, that's correct. So is that all of the hardship category?
What?
Well, Tom, your plot size...
That's not, definitely not hardship.
No.
And then they aren't, I mean, they're, that's one aspect of their presentation is hardship. Um, he also went beyond that, he was just indicating that just because of the particular depth of the property, they, they can't meet the sixteen eighty-eight square foot, I mean, eighteen hundred square foot, even though they can meet the width and the depth. And that's what's weird about our, I mean, the all origins, but, so they meet the width requirement twenty-five feet and the depth requirement sixty feet, but not the overall square footage required. So, um, that's that, but, yeah, I mean, so there's, there's hardship, um, and they're indicating that because their depth doesn't give them all that, um, they can't meet it, but there's, then beyond that, beyond the hardship, uh, variants here, as Mr. Reagan put forth, positive and the negative criteria here, for reasons that he put forward in record, which I'm sure Mr. Kennedy already had.
Who else? Your vote?
I'll make a motion to approve subdivision, and it's very mild, it's working for a lot. And the end result, uh, between two lots, the house, conforming street neighborhood, and, uh, makes more sense, and, and the other wall, I'll second it, and remember, just say, uh, it's interesting, presented some very, their companion facts, uh, explaining the scenario very well, and I think, actually, uh, I've noticed, uh, Steve, is the airspace between the two, and there's some subtleties here that you can easily get lost and undervalued, if you will, if you stick with the...
Yes.
So I appreciate this type of presentation, so I'll second your...
Just remember, if I may, not to cut anyone's vote, and I promise in less than one minute, if I can give my, uh, summation, if I can just go through the record, and I'll start now. Uh, thank you very much. And again, uh, Kerry Higgins, uh, just gave a very, uh, brief summation. And we're talking about a C one or C two variance. C one is the hardship, or C two is, they sometimes call flexible C. And they say, all right, maybe it's not a hardship, and financial is not a hardship, uh, is, maybe it's not a hardship, but do the benefits outweigh the deficits? And, and that's really what we're coming for. So in terms of the continuity of design of homes in the neighborhood, continuity of lot sizes in the neighborhood, we're not gonna, if this application's approved, we're not gonna stick out and sort them. We're not going to be inconsistent with the, in the neighborhood. We are gonna have the flood and FEMA improvements. And I think what we also say, and, and we don't mean this as a threat, but the, the options, the other scenarios, aren't so great. The existing dwelling is not in good shape, it's not FEMA compliant, it's not appropriately located, and a lot needs overhanding. Um, building one, uh, conforming single-family home, as was testified to, is not the best alternative. And there's no uncontradicated, uh, no testimony, uh, against the application. And I also think, in my last ten seconds, one of the things they always wanna check is, does this application represent a better overall zoning alternative? And we respectfully submit that it does, and I apologize for interfering with the flow of emotion in a second.
No, that's fine, I have both questions now.
But this is the camera.
Oh, okay. So if this, when the houses come in, I understand there's gonna be the deed restriction, that they have to completely perform the ordinance, minus the variance that we just gave, uh, you agreed that all the conditions inside Mr. Lawrence's letter, including the fact there are gonna be two off-street parking spaces?
Yes.
The intention, I'm sorry, off-street, yes, off-street, yes.
So they have to be two, per, per unit?
Correct.
So there could be four, there could be four off-street parking spaces?
Correct. Correct, I heard that.
Presumably a garage that you're gonna...
Yes.
No, and, and just in, uh, for, their, their, obviously, there's a motion in a second, and a little part of the discussion.
Who was there, a few questions?
No, no, you stated perfectly, I was wanting to recap that Mr. Cashmore really did point out the difference between, um, the existing home and the coverage, with the existing coverage, if there were, uh, two homes versus the coverage, what they did, one home in terms of square footage, that Mr. Cashmore pointed out, there's more of the space and Mr. Higgins, but, I don't know, Mr. Jackson, gives the, the numbers and the exact. Um, that's, we're open space with the, uh, proposed subdivision two, and, um, I think, uh, Mr. Smith and everybody discussed the fact that you're taking a very non-conforming home, uh, non-conforming to bulk, and as well as non-conforming to FEMA, uh, the new, uh, proposal, so even though you're not proving anything, though, it would have to be FEMA compliant, and the applicant stipulated that they would de-restrict these two lots, um, so that they must be, uh, conforming to all bulk requirements. Obviously, the homes must be conforming to bulk requirements, the lots, um, they're giving the variance for the, uh, the square footage, uh, which is a hundred and some odd feet short, and, um, apply with all FEMA requirements, and, uh, conform to, then apply with, uh, the, I am set for the Mr. Lawrence's letter.
And that was all included in the motion? Any further discussion from the board? We have a motion on this board, we have a roll call, please.
Mr. Gattaford?
Yes.
Carol Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Jordan? Yes. Count Tom, I see?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Bills?
Yes.
Ms. Rat?
Yes.
Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate that.
I'd like to thank the board for the pictures and, uh, on this, and I, I hope that all of you, please, I think, uh, you have a lot.
Thank you all.
Eric, the...
On to the next one. Our next meeting is on December tenth, September third, and that's the only act. Seeing the listeners, any additional information from the public? Everyone in the public wishes to be heard this evening. We have a call for the chairman. Meeting motion to adjourn.
I'll adjourn.
All the way here. Thank you all.